Hello, everyone. I'm Town Manager Kevin Mizikar. Thank you for the opportunity for us to provide a little bit of information about an upcoming special town meeting that will be held on September 29th at 7:00 PM in the Field House at the Shrewsbury High School. That evening, Town Meeting members will be asked to consider a single article, which will be a borrowing authorization for the construction of a new police station and public safety radio communication system. We'll get into the timing of the critical need to move this project forward at this time. We are preparing for a town meeting in the Field House, which is a rather large space with appropriate social distancing. Masks will be required, and the Board of Selectmen and the moderator will be discussing reducing the quorum requirements so that we can make sure that we are able to conduct the meeting of town business at their upcoming meeting on September 22nd. The Town Manager's packet that will go out later this week, this Friday, which is September 18th, will include all the safety protocols that we'll use related to COVID-19 for this single article special town meeting. We will attempt to be prompt, but it's a significant project, and we will do everything that we can to make sure that all the details related to the project are clearly presented that evening to Town Meeting members, and you are able to make an informed decision for your vote that evening. So, our goal today is to just have a conversation among the three of us. I'm fortunate to be joined by Assistant Town Manager Kristin Lass, and she is a member of the Police and Municipal Campus Building Committee, along with seven other, or six other members, and also with Chief Anderson, Chief Kevin Anderson, Police Chief here in Shrewsbury. And we're going to have a conversation and review the main details about this project as we know it right now. So, I think it's appropriate if we start a little, start off with a little background about the Shrewsbury Police Station that sits here on the municipal campus at 100 Maple Avenue. So, Chief Anderson, welcome, and if you wouldn't mind, just give us a little bit of overview about that existing station and how it's benefited the town.
Thank you. The original station was built in 1972, approximately 9,000 square feet. In 1996, we did a renovation project to the building, and we added about 8,000 square feet, bring it to just over 17,000 square feet. What we did is we added a new, a new bay, which had two garage bays. We added a hallway that connected the Sally Port to the booking room, and we converted the existing two garage bays into administrative offices and the chief's office. And the rest of the station, other than the communications center, was added a little bit, there was a little extra space added to that, but the rest of the building primarily stayed the same. Detective Bureau, the second floor, didn't change at all. And at that point, we, it was 1996, we had a, we had a technology boom, I would say, in the late 90s, early 2000s. So, fairly quickly, the size of the station ended up being too small, and also, it wasn't equipped for the advance in technology.
So, that's limited the department's ability to adapt with that technology, I imagine, over the years, the station in and of itself?
Absolutely. The two main parts of the police station that are hottest to improve on or expand is the dispatch center and the lockup facility. It's just the way they're designed and how they're built. So, we were able to add one more station within the dispatch center just by moving some things around, but at this point, we're just at capacity.
Okay, great. So, I think keeping along, or keeping on the history context here at the beginning, can you tell us a little bit about what the Police Department was like in the 1970s and the 1980s, and then in the 90s? The activities and the number of officers and the workload and things like that versus what they are today, and how the station impacts that, or impacts our ability to provide modern policing?
Sure. If you go back to 1972, it was basically an arrest model versus more of a community service model in today's day and age. For example, in 1972, there was probably, I think there was 1,500, over 1,500 arrests, where last year, we had 396 arrests. But in the same, same model, it's changed, where we have more calls for service because we provide more services to the community. So, you're giving an example, in 1980, we had 32 police officers with 13,000 incidents with 25, 22,000 population. Currently, we have approximately 38,000 incidents about 40 years later, with a population of about 38,000. So, the calls for service have increased because the way we do policing is changing.
And how is the station prepared for that number of officers that we have today? What are the challenges that you see there on a day-to-day basis?
It's cramped. We have, we have officers, given example, we have two workstations for 35 patrol officers.
Two computers.
Two computers, and that's all we have. And that computer, that isn't in a room that, it's private for them. One of them is in our mailroom, so it's a combination mailroom and workstation. And then the second workstation is a combination, you know, roll call room, training room, and lunchroom. And there's one workstation in that room. So, it's very difficult for an officer to have privacy while doing work or doing their reports.
So, Chief, so, most people see police officers out on the street, you know, in their cruisers. Everyone knows we have computers within the cruisers. What would an officer do within the Police Department at a computer if we actually had kind of the industry standard? What do they do in there, and why is it important to have that?
It's actually, it's very important. They access the internet, they may do the follow-up or getting information off the internet to contact someone or to contact a witness or a suspect, or they may be talking to a witness or a suspect on a phone, and privacy is very important for that.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the type of things they do within the station. It's a lot of follow-up work on an incident that may, may go, you know, may take a day or two to, to play itself out.
So, I know you and I have talked many times about some of the other challenges with the existing station. One thing that comes to my mind every time we talk about the new station is both record storage and evidence storage. So, can you, can you talk a little bit about how we currently store evidence and records, and what some of the industry standards are, how long we have to store records, and how a new station would help us improve upon that, and who it would benefit, really?
Sure. Currently, our records and our evidence is kept in a storage which is inadequate. It should be ventilated properly, it should have proper air conditioning and heating. It's actually in the attic above the garage. In 2012, the law changed, we have to keep evidence a lot longer now. Prior to that, when somebody was convicted of a crime and they were incarcerated, you could start expunging the evidence and getting rid of it. In 2012, the law passed that you have to keep it while the person's incarcerated, any type of parole, probation. So, the, keeping the evidence is, it could be up to 25 years now. It could actually be indefinitely. So, that has increased, and we just don't have the space for it. And the, and the way it's set up above the garage in an attic, we do have an evidence processing area. The issue is, in the winter, it's, it can get bitter cold up there, to the point that the officer can't even be upstairs. And the same thing in the summer, but the opposite, it's just too hot. And it's, it's just not, you can't be up there, it's so hot. We do have air conditioning, but it just, it's not adequate.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, that's important because residents rely upon you as the Chief of Police and the Police Department to maintain evidence appropriately, so whenever, you know, if there's, you know, some type of crime against them as a person or their property, that, you know, when it comes time to go to court, which could be how long, years?
Yes.
After the incident occurs, that we're ready to be able to appropriately document what happened and provide help to them, you know? It's, you know, I think it's critical.
Another piece on that is, you know, the chain of custody. Where the evidence, just the location of the evidence room, you have to travel through the entire building and go up to a second floor to process, to put the evidence in temporary storage. Where the ideal situation, the evidence should be as close to the booking area as possible. So, then the only person that would take that evidence to that, from that location to a bulk storage location within the Police Department would be the evidence officer.
Okay. All right. So, I look forward to talking to you more about, you know, some of the preliminary design in the new station and how that will help with your vision, but I, just one more quick question about the existing station. I know officer health and safety and fitness is always at the top of a lot of people's mind, you know, it's a physical job, and they need to protect themselves and, and protect the members of the community. Do we have any type of facilities in that, like a workout facility or anything like that in the existing station?
We don't. In fact, the, we did have a workout facility that was, that was designed in 1996, and that was above the garage as well. Within, I would say, within about a year, we never actually had the equipment, but within about a year, we had to use that area for storage. So, we had to put filing cabinets up there that are still there to this day. So, we don't have a workout facility. We also don't have a facility for training and education. The International Chiefs of Police Standard is a 40-person training room. Right now, we have eight, and that's also our roll call room and our lunchroom. So, it's difficult for us to provide training for the entire department, or majority of the department, because we just don't have the space. And in fact, roll call on a regular basis, we have, we have officers standing, and during training, we'll have officers standing. So, that's, that's an issue, because the other thing is our defensive tactics training, de-escalation training, we have to do that off-site, and if we had a facility, we could do that onsite, we could do that not only more efficient, but we could do it more often.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Well, Chief, before we get into some of, some other questions I have for Kristin at this point, can you just take maybe two minutes and talk about your vision for the, the department, your interaction with the community, and, and how the new building may benefit that vision that you have that we've talked about?
Sure. My vision is using a 21st century policing model, and I think in order for us to work on that and work better with that, we need a better facility. And it starts right with the lobby. You have to have a lobby that's inviting, that, that people want to be in. Right now, our lobby is very small. We have four seats in the lobby, and on a regular basis, we'll have somebody coming in the lobby for a police report, to file a police report. We could have someone going in there to report their child missing. We could have someone going in there to register as a sex offender. We could have someone going in there to just pick up a prisoner, because currently, what we do is, when we release prisoners, we release them in the lobby, which I don't think having that, you know, that's not a safe environment for those different types of interactions. My vision would be, you go into an inviting lobby, you have maybe a liaison or a citizen that is in that lobby to direct you to a certain place in the police station that would help you. You know, if it's a detective bureau, you could go right to that unit, and you could wait in that waiting room. The traffic division, if you could have a traffic issue, you could go and wait in that division. Or juvenile issue, you could go and wait in that, that division. So, it's separated, and it's safe, and the people are treated fairly, and they're treated with good service.
Great. Thank you so much. Kristin, I wanted to turn over to you to just talk a little bit about timing of this project and, and some of the, the processes and financials associated with it. So, just curious, your understanding on really when the town started talking about a police station project and what's gotten us to this point today?
Sure. Well, I think, you know, the chief alluded to that there was a need even in the late 90s for the expansion of the police station, and I think that the town has been very generous over the past few years of building several new schools and a new library, and now is the police station's time for a renovation or reconstruction that we hope that the Town Meeting members will vote on and consider, and then the voters will consider in November. So, as far as I can remember, you know, it probably dates back to the late 90s, early 2000s, if we were talking about a police station, and the officers and the chief have been so generously and patiently waiting for this time to come to build a state-of-the-art facility that all from Shrewsbury can be proud of.
Great. So, I know you're on the Building Committee, and the Building Committee's really met in earnest throughout the course of the, the spring and summer of 2020. What was the first step that was taken, though, with regards to formal town-wide approval of this type of project, you know, to go under study or, or to be reviewed?
Sure. So, this really dates back into the March timeframe of 2019, where the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen put an article on the Town Meeting Warrant, the annual Town Meeting of May 2019, to appropriate $250,000 for the cost of the feasibility study associated with the police station and the municipal campus as a whole. So, the Town Hall and the Senior Center, the entire property at 100 Maple Avenue. So, that appropriation made back in 2019 was done, and then, following that, the, the state appropriated $50,000 to add to that feasibility study. The, the town of Shrewsbury contracted with Construction Monitoring Services, which is our owner's project manager, back in September of 2019, and they helped lead us to the process to selecting an architect for the project in early 2020. And that architect is Tekton Architects, who specializes in municipal campus and police station architecture.
Great. So, what, you mentioned the larger project that was put into that feasibility study back in 2019. What is the overall status of the feasibility study? And, you know, obviously, today, we're just talking about the police station. What's the status with the rest of it?
Sure. So, just briefly, back in February of 2020, Tekton Architects and our owner's project manager, CMS, began to meet with all of the department heads who have facilities or offices on the campus. So, the Police Chief, former Police Chief Hester, and at that time Lieutenant Anderson, were meeting in earnest about the, the police station, the existing conditions, and then their vision for that. All of the department heads that are housed here at Town Hall, including Selco and the School Department, also met with the architects to understand the existing conditions and the potential needs. And then the Council on Aging Director met with the architects related to that building. The design, or the look, or the feasibility of all three of these buildings has really just been almost finalized by the Building Committee. We've advanced the police station much more quickly, as the Board of Selectmen have outlined in many of their public meetings, that they wish to see this project, being the police station project, move forward, and perhaps the municipal campus of the Town Hall and the COA could move forward under another borrowing authorization. So, the Police Station Municipal Campus Feasibility, Building Committee has really focused the majority of their efforts from May on the police station, but have certainly looked at the other two buildings in earnest.
Yeah. Yeah, I know in, must have been late July, the Board of Selectmen, understanding the impacts of obviously COVID-19 and financial implications for the community at large and the town specifically, really decided to pull back on the total scope of this project and focus on what has always been their largest priority, of course, the police station. But, yeah, it's interesting to, to hear about the Buildings Committee's role in that and their focus on the, the station as well. So, Chief, I failed to mention that you're on the Building Committee as well, so you've been putting in those hours in addition to all your new duties as well, but what's your impression of, you know, or what's, you know, thoughts on what the new station is going to look like? You know, what's, you know, what's it, how's the public going to view it? And can just take it from there?
Sure. I think that, you know, police stations have changed. My, my vision of the police station is more, more of a community building, and that's why I like, I like how the design came out with the two conference rooms right off the entrance of the lobby of the, the police station. I think that's good for the public, they could be utilized by the police, the public, other departments can use it for, you know, a training room or a meeting room. And I, I think that I want, my vision is to have the Police Department safe for the community members, the staff, and also, you know, obviously, people that we bring in, you know, bring custody. And it all needs to be separate. Right now, it's not. It is areas of the police station where the community members can be walking down a hallway, that's the same hallway that we bring prisoners in and out, as well as staff walks through that hallway. So, I think the vision of the new police station is keep that separate, that area separate, and then keep, have another area for community members to utilize, and also have areas within the department where, you know, staff and officers have their own space to work that's dedicated to them. I think that works better than having two workstations for 35 officers.
Right. And as I mentioned at the outset, I'll, I'll turn back to Kristin, as I mentioned at the outset, there's one other kind of component to this borrowing authorization that we're asking Town Meeting to consider, which is a public radio communication system. I'm going to ask the Chief a couple of questions operationally about that, but Kristin, can you provide us an overview with that portion, which is, you know, kind of less than 20% of, of the total ask, but, you know, is significant because it's not the police station itself? So, what's, what's entailed with that?
So, I'll just back up a little bit before I discuss the radio system. I don't, I think we failed to mention that the Building Committee has been looking at a new police station on the municipal campus, so that we will not be using the existing police station, but the town of Shrewsbury does own land to the west of the existing police station, and the committee and our design consultants have deemed that it's most feasible to have the new police station on the same property. So, just wanted to let members of the public know that we intend to keep the police station, if approved, on the 100 Maple Avenue campus property. We feel that that's in the best interest to have them on, on that campus. So, the radio system is a part of the overall cost of the project, and Chief Anderson has much more knowledge of what the radio system is than I do. However, it's a system that the town uses to communicate with each other, and it's not only the Police Department, but it's the Fire Department, the Department of Public Works with Parks and Recreation, Highway Department, Engineering, and also Selco. And it's a system that we, we use that is, communication is not cell phones, it's radio frequencies. And what I've learned over the past few months is that we can also get on other towns' frequencies. So, if we need assistance from other towns, we can reach out to them via the radio system or vice versa. So, our system is quite antiquated. I know there's areas in the town of Shrewsbury where the radios actually don't work, which is a huge safety issue, especially for police and fire. And we have been working over the course of the past year to understand how we can upgrade this system, and the estimated cost is about $5 million, but we see it as a benefit for the entire town, and see that Selco would obviously join in their cost, and then the town would request the borrowing for those other departments. So, I'll let the Chief touch upon more intricacies of the radio system itself.
Yeah, Chief, I know that, you know, I haven't been here the longest, but I know that, you know, one of the first things that I was briefed on by, you know, the former chief was concerns with the public safety radio communication system, and it certainly impacts police and fire the most, you know, as Kristin mentioned, with dead spots and other operational challenges. Can you talk a little bit about those challenges and why now is the time that we, you know, kind of need to pursue this communications project as well?
Absolutely. It's, it's obviously a public safety issue. We have, we have areas in town that we can't transmit and also dispatch, communications center cannot hear the officer when they're, when they're speaking on their radio. Currently, what, how the system works, it'll go to the closest transfer area and get sent to the communications center. The new system is going to be a digital system and a trunked system. So, there's going to be three separate locations to the town, where the radio transmission goes to that location, and it can actually recognize what radio it's supposed to be going to. And also, the new system will incorporate the entire town. Currently, each, the Selco, Highway Department, and Fire Department, and Police Department are in different, different systems. This is going to be all in one. So, we'll have better communication, we'll be able to communicate better with one another, and it'll just be more efficient, more safe, and it's going to be better response time for the, for the police.
Yeah. I mean, anecdotally, I know I've heard, and we always give, you know, people like now Sergeant Faucher and Joe Milos, firefighter Joe Milos, a lot of credit and ingenuity, but they're literally going out to eBay and other types of common public marketplaces to try to cobble together the replacement parts for this existing radio system, which, again, kudos to them for, you know, doing, providing an efficient system, but it's no way to run a system where people's lives, and I'm not just talking about officers and firefighters, but residents' lives are depending upon that efficient communication, and not only just efficient communication, but effective, like actually happening, and it's not happening everywhere in the community. And I think that it is critical that we move forward with this. The only other thing that I want to say from my standpoint is that, you know, we received, again, kind of a, you know, we did our jobs to, to the greatest extent we could, and we received an earmark through the state budget process to fund a radio feasibility project. So, we never had to go to Town Meeting to talk to them about that and request that funding. And, so this may be a surprise to some folks, but we were actually working on the baseline feasibility design for the radio system in advance of the, the police station, because we knew we wanted to be ready once a police station came about to be able to do, put the radio system in there. In my opinion, it's a difficult ask for the residents just to consider $5 million for a public safety radio system, kind of like, you know, in its own box. But when you, when you, you find efficiencies, whenever you need to borrow for that type of money anyhow, and you're going to put it together with a bigger project, and we're not ripping infrastructure out of a 1972 police station to replace, you know, to one day think we're going to have a new system or station, I think it's important. So, those are the efficiencies that we've been thinking about for this radio system, and that's why we're trying to really partner the two projects together and do it all at one time, because it makes a whole lot more sense physically for what goes in the building and, and for the officers' communication outside, to do it, you know, all together. So, both are very, very critical to the success of, of a lot of departments. Kristin, you mentioned a little bit about the cost of the radio system being around $5 million in total, with Selco making up a little less than 20% of that, that they'll be responsible for that cost. We haven't talked about the, the cost of the overall project, so can you spend a couple of minutes and, and talk about the, the total cost of the police station and what will be involved in, in the borrowing authorization at Town Meeting?
Sure. Before I get to the cost, if Chief Anderson can assist, I'd like to talk a little bit about the new building and what that consists of, and then we can get into the cost. So, we're looking at a building about 44,000 square feet in area. As Chief Anderson alluded to, we have the, the welcome lobby area, we have some community meeting rooms and space, and then the dedicated areas to administrative staff, traffic, bookings, the Sally Port and the like. One other feature that we feel is really important is we have garaging spaces for the cruisers and to, to keep them safe and our equipment safe from the elements that we have here in New England. So, really, we have worked with the Building Committee and the architects to design a state-of-the-art facility, but in the Shrewsbury way, we've been very cognizant of costs and how we would use the building and not going over the top with certain things. So, I don't know, Chief, if you want to add any other additional features of the, the building that you've worked with the architects on that might be new or more efficient, you know, new dispatch space, those types of things?
Absolutely. The, the first, first piece is the training room. The training room will be 40 seats. That training room will be, it's up to International Chiefs of Police Standards, so, to provide training. That's going to be separate from a roll call, and also separate from the area where the officers will be having lunch. The next, next piece would be the locker rooms. Currently, we have 34 lockers for 50 male officers, and we have six lockers for one female officer. As the department grows and as we become more diverse, which is my plan, that may be difficult with six lockers for, for that number. And also, we're already below the amount of lockers we would need for the male officers. And we, right now, we have a sergeant's office that, we have seven sergeants sharing one office and one terminal, and the, the office isn't even, I think it's eight by eight, it's very small. It actually used to be a closet. The, the booking room currently has two booking areas, booking terminals, but not really two separate booking areas. It's two terminals on one area, and that's a safety issue. And the new station will have two separate areas that you could have each person in custody separated. The Detective Bureau is going to be on the second floor, that, that has, includes additional space for, you know, for the next 50 years out. You know, this building is being built for 50-year, you know, estimated time. So, a lot of the, a lot of the spaces are being built for the future, because what we've learned in the past was shortly after we built that renovation, we were out of space. So, it's just more, more functional and, you know, more training rooms. There's also going to be a training room for de-escalation training, for officer wellness. There's a gym where the officers can utilize and... There's a gym where the officers can utilize and to keep, keep in shape and keep physically fit. So that's going to be in addition to the, to, on the plans of the new station.
Right. We were talking about the radio communication system just recently, but one of the goals of this project also is to improve efficiencies in our dispatching services themselves. Currently, we dispatch police from the police station and fire from the fire department. And we're looking for a joint or unified dispatching honestly will provide a lot of benefit to the fire department because right now that dispatcher in the fire department is a firefighter. And everyone knows that Chief Vonai and, and a lot of other folks have been strong advocates for more firefighters. Yet we're holding one of them up, you know, in a dispatcher's role. And that will release that, that person to do that. So this new station will be designed for joint dispatching and accommodate that space for that more modern approach to that. So I think one of the other points that I'll just touch on from what Kristin said is that, that we'll have efficiencies because we'll be able to use the existing station until the day that we cut the ribbon on the new station. And, you know, not just from, you know, it, it'll be all in the same place. So the chief will be able to monitor the, the progress of the construction, provide input as needed. But then, you know, the, the, you know, we'll be able to move into the new station, kind of like the Sherwood walk that happened. We'll move out of, we'll move out of one building and into the other the next day. So I think now.
I'm sorry. I think a really good aspect of the, the, what the building committee, you know, we talked about was that campus feel. I, I do like that because it's, it's just, it's more efficient. I can't tell you how many times in my career people come to the police station and, and it's a question not related to us, but it would be nice for us to be able to say, you know, you can go right next door. You can go to the school department or the senior center and they can help you out with that. I do like that, that concept of a, of a campus.
Yep. And one other feature of this, of police station that may seem inherent, but I think it's worth noting is that it is a police station, right? So it is a building that needs to be standing regardless of weather conditions, no matter how severe. And it has some special characteristics to it, like, you know, being earthquake-proof and being able to withstand very significant winds from a hurricane or a tornado. And unfortunately, in, in today's day and maybe forever, it just needs to be safe and secure for those working inside. So that adds a little bit to the footprint to, to make it, you know, safer from all those standpoints. It, it will be our nerve center for all communications during weather events and, and other events in the community, and it can't fail. There's, there's no opportunity for it to fail.
Absolutely.
It, it needs to be built appropriately for that. Any other features that you all remember that you want to go to? Or should we move into a little bit more about the cost?
Yeah, going back to the evidence room, I, I think that's how it's designed. We have a temporary evidence storage on the plans downstairs, right next to the booking area. And any bulk evidence that we need to keep for long term, that can be stored upstairs. I think there's a, there's good, there's also very good room for expansion in case this town grows even faster than anticipated. So I think that's some really good features in that way.
Great. And we'll have that campus look and feel very consistent with the town hall and the senior center, you know, since it is all on this, the same campus. So Kristin, let's talk a little bit about the budget then with, with this building that will suit the needs of the department for, for now and into the future. So you could just talk a little bit about the cost estimate and where we're at with that as far as the design.
Absolutely. So as part of the feasibility study that the building committee has been going through with the architect, we have gone out for a cost estimate of the project. As Mr. Mizikar stated, the radio system is $5, $5 million right off the top. So the ask is $42 million for the total project. For some town meeting members who may be familiar with some other building projects that we've done in town, building projects are kind of chunked into project hard costs and project soft costs. So hard cost is really the actual construction of the facility, the concrete, the pavement, the, the bricks and mortar, the steel and whatnot. And that total project hard cost is about $30 million. That's carrying a 10% contingency cost of about $2.7 million. And again, all of these cost estimates, we believe, are on point. They're escalated to when we would actually be going out to construction. And we reap the benefits of actually not having to purchase a piece of property. We actually already own the property. The soft costs developed, associated with the project are about $6.7 million. These are kind of the intangibles. So our designer fees, we're going to be continuing to design the building, design the site. This is, we're at the feasibility concept. We have to still do two other schematic design and design development processes. And we need our civil engineers and architects and, and site contractors to do, go through that. We've also, through the building committee, have requested to do this project at Construction Manager at Risk, which is a type of procurement through Mass General Law that we're allowed to do. We've done CM at Risk for the Sherwood project, the library, and the Beal School. So it is slightly more expensive upfront, but we've seen a lot of savings over those projects with the ability to design things on the fly or design things more efficiently as we're moving through the construction process. And soft costs also include, you know, the furniture and the equipment inside of the building, the communications equipment that will be required, separate from the radio project. And we also have a contingency of 5% on those soft costs. So again, that is the long and short of it. There's more detail through the building committee's website. We've talked extensively about what CM at Risk means versus the traditional design bid build. So if town meeting members are a little bit curious to learn more about those procurement methods, they can watch some of the building committee tapes or read our minutes. But that is the, the summary of the costs.
I think one thing that, that we've always, or recently have found success in, but it's kind of been a tradition in the community, is we've recently found success in the CM at Risk in projecting a higher cost and then really working well with a general contractor and, and in the end, reducing the overall cost of what it would have been to use the other procurement. But building committees in this town have always been so diligent and there's been so much oversight from staff and the building committees that these initial project costs, you know, knock on wood, aren't exceeded. And that's what we really expect with this. We're very early in the design process. We've set a number out, out there that we're comfortable with. But I've also seen the inner workings of this building committee that, you know, this isn't the original footprint that the architect, you know, proposed. We've been working to minimize it and make sure that it only meets our need. And being at the conceptual level, now's the time that we need the community to weigh in on us moving forward. But we're going to work day in and day out to continue to reduce the footprint and reduce the cost to the greatest extent possible while providing a library-like or a Sherwood-like or a Beal-like outcome at the end of the day. So a lot of work to go, a lot of shoes to fill from building committees that have gone before you, but, you know, we're confident that that will be the same outcome. You know, touching on the Beal project, that project continues to remain on schedule and knock on wood, again, under budget. And under budget can, you know, significantly, from what we originally went to town meeting, you know, if we make it through the final six months of, of construction without a lot, you know, any challenges or any even minor challenges, we're not going to have to borrow any more money, which is, you know, could be a, a several million dollar savings to the community in the end, which we would expect for this project as well. But it's, now's the time to ask town meeting in the community for their thoughts on us moving forward with it. So we've talked a lot about, you know, the design of the building. And I just want to touch on a, a couple of things and have both of you join in. Operating costs. Obviously, if you're moving from a 17,000 square foot building to a 44,000 or what will likely be less than that in the end, there's going to be more operating costs. It's not something we're trying to hide. Utilities, you know, will cost more and the maintenance thereof will cost more. But it's really a cost of doing business in order to support the operations of the police department, like we've supported so many others. But we're going to do everything we can, again, to provide, you know, energy-efficient utility systems and, you know, that's all to come in the design process. So I don't know if anyone else had other thoughts about cost mitigations or operating cost savings or efficiencies from this project? We talked a little bit about joint dispatching. But there's going to be shelters outside. Kristin, I don't know if you wanted to touch on those that will protect the cruisers, but there's opportunities there.
Sure. So there's a few areas that we're building upon related to energy efficiency or climate change preparedness, if you might call it that. Over the past few years, the town of Shrewsbury has been designated as a green community. So we have vowed to reduce our energy consumption in town by 20% in five years. We're one year through that process. And we're also a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. So we've worked to identify what our vulnerabilities are related to climate change. And the building committee and the architects and our OPM have talked extensively about how this new police station building will fit into those two plans or projects that the town has adopted. More to come on that, I think, through the exact design. But certainly, we're looking at overhang for the cruisers that would be solar capable to provide some offsets for electricity to the building and other things. So at the finance committee meeting on Thursday evening of this week, we're certainly going to be touching upon operating costs and continuing to refine that for town meeting members leading up to September 29th. But we're taking into all of those things into account of how to be more energy-efficient with the building, be prepared for any vulnerabilities that come our way, but also continue to understand that a police station operates 24 hours a day. We can't shut down the HVAC system. We can't shut down the lights. We can certainly be smart about it and have, have systems that are, are smart to that extent. But the cost will inherently, most likely, be increasing slightly.
Chief, I know that handling roughly 800 to 900 calls per officer per year is, is, is a, is a big challenge for officers. But I believe the answer is no, but, you know, out of transparency, is there any direct relationship from the construction of this building to the increase in staffing of the police department? Does, you know, is there, is there, you know, if you build this station, then you have to staff up more?
Well, we, we need to staff up regardless of the building.
Okay.
So that, they're not, you know, together. But it, it would help us growing in the future. Like I said, it'd have designated work areas for specific positions. And we don't necessarily have to staff, but we, we do need to add additional staff regardless of where we have a building.
Sure.
It would be very difficult to increase a traffic division or create, actually create a traffic division. Currently, we don't have one. So that, that would be difficult to do because we just don't have the space. So, yeah, it, we do need to increase staffing, but it, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to have the building to fill it up.
Sure.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, no, it, it really does. And one operational thing before we get to, I think the only outstanding question is, we've talked about the design, we've talked about the overall cost, but how does it really impact taxpayers? But Chief, so we're in Shrewsbury and we're, you know, neighboring New England's second-largest community, or second-largest municipality, the city of Worcester, second only to the city of Boston. How does that make policing unique to us versus maybe a community with 38,000 like Greenfield or something that's, you know, more rural?
Sure. Absolutely. Like you said, we're 41 miles east west of Boston, and we border the second-largest city in New England. We also have four major highways that go through town. So during the day, we operate more like a small city than we do a town. So we have more calls for service. I believe it was last year or the year before, I think we had similar calls for service as a city of Marlboro. So we, we're very busy during the day. Like I said, we operate more like a city during the day.
Yeah. So now comes the value proposition, right? Kristin, how, how will this project? What will it look like on the tax bill? And how will residents see that impact? And what we think is providing great value to them through the police department? But let's talk about the individual impact, if you could. So what does it mean for the average tax, or for, you know, the average taxpayer? And, you know, what, what are they likely to see on their tax bill?
Sure. So just giving a little bit of, of history and background. So we anticipate that the borrowing would be a 20-year borrowing. We anticipate that the interest rate would be 1.9%. We're actually seeing very favorable interest rates right now. We've been on the, on the phone with bond counsel and our bonding company over the past few weeks. And we're able to take advantage of our AAA bond rating that we obtained last summer before we went out to request bonds for the Beal School. So we have set ourselves up for success in that fashion. So, and Mr. Mizikar, I might need your assistance just going through this. But, you know, we, we're still working our way through how many borrowings we may do for this type of project. But overall, we'd need to borrow about $42 million on this. And we always like to put things in the perspective of what is the average fam, single-family taxpayer paying and what that rate would be. So we see that this would be coming on the tax roll about fiscal 2022. And the 50 percentile of the single-family tax rate would be about a little under $200 a year. And then it would be declining over time. The, the finance committee and the town has seen that the declining model has been best suited for our town. We also will have some other projects declining in, in that rate as well. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how Beal falls on the tax roll and then how this project will hit? And we can certainly build upon that.
Right. Yep. So for fiscal year 21, Beal is on the tax roll. So, you know, that will be, you know, that's there. That's in the plans with this year's budget that we've already set. But as you mentioned, declining debt service, which is the model that we use, it, it really does two things. One, it keeps our interest, the, the amount that we pay in interest as low as possible because we're paying off principal as fast as we can over that 20-year period. But it does mean that we pay less and less every year, where I think folks may be familiar with the conventional mortgage. You know, you pay the same amount every month or every year throughout that 30-year term. Well, this is a 20-year borrowing where we actually pay less and less every year. So, you know, you can see the graph where, you know, our total commitment to debt service declines as we move out in time. So for the benefit of this project, as other projects are rolling off, like the, the high school, that really buoys the, the impact or lessens the impact of, of what this new police station. So that, that gross effect on the tax bill will be about $194. But the net effect will really be closer to $170 because the rest of the debt is, is, is getting less and less over time. So we'll use that same model here and, you know, the taxpayers will benefit for this project and for the other projects. So, yeah, I mean, it, it, I, I think when you look at the cost of an investment like this, it's, it's often easier to look at it on a monthly basis. You know, most people pay their mortgage on a monthly basis, not an annual basis. Most people pay their, you know, cell phone bills and car payments monthly. And so it'd be about $16 a month, you know, for more than 50% of the households in this community. So we, again, you know, because of that design, well, first of all, because of the needs and then the design that we've come up with, the building committees come up with, I think there is great value in a project that's going to cost more than half of the community about $16 a month to better enable the future operations of our police department. So with that, I think we're coming to a close. I just want to remind everyone that the special town meeting will occur September 29th at 7 o'clock in the high school field house and with appropriate COVID protocols in place. It is a single article meeting, and that means relatively speaking, the duration should be much shorter than even your average special town meeting. But we stand ready to provide information and answer questions that evening. I want to thank both of you for your time and, and providing input and, and information to the public. Remind folks that they're able to both live or after the fact, watch the finance committee's public hearing that will occur September 17th at 7:00 PM through virtual means and on SMC. And with that, I want to thank SMC for recording this and encourage town meeting members to come out September 29th and vote on this borrowing authorization for a new police station and public radio communication system. Thank you.